So first we will do a fundamental little tour. Then we will go into the details. Now, you see, legal writing is very, very, very important. When you do corporate related matters, you see that most of your maximum work is in drafting, documentation drafting. So in that, each word, even a comma, you will have a lot of words. Now, there is a case. That case is that a comma is not present. 10 million dollars is lost by that company or organization. How is it? Let us tell you an example. Now, workers have a new provision for overtime. The overtime is 40 hours per week. So, some catalysts only work. They earn 1.5 times more compensation overtime. But they do not get exemptions for that. Who is the company? The drivers. That is the case. So, drivers, we say, are not. This exemption is not allowed. But if they say, no, this rule is not allowed, then they cannot overtime. Actually, it is very, very simple. They say, except below, except following activities. What do we do? Caning, processing, that is a comma. The caning, comma, processing, comma, preserving, comma, freezing, drying, marketing, storing. All these are commas. Now, one word is said. Packing, packing for shipment or distribution of, whether it is packing for shipment or distribution. They say that this exemption is not allowed. Now, if you see, packing for shipment or distribution of, there is no comma. Now, what do they say? Drivers say, this is for the passengers. Distribution is not allowed. Because if drivers are not present, distribution is not allowed. So, they have to take a difference. Actually, how to put this? This is Oxford commands. Or serial commands. Oxford command. You have to put a list of 4-5 items. Suppose, my favorite colors are blue, yellow, white, black. Now, this is usually a comma. Traditionally, it is not a comma. Blue, white, red and yellow. Now, the serial command is, and before that, a comma is required. That is the Oxford comma or serial comma. What do we do? Packing for shipment. And actually, the comma is required before the distribution. And I have to put packing for shipment only. There is no comma. In this one issue, the court is not present. Drivers are present in distribution. So, they do not get exemption. He has to pay 10 million dollars as to bear. So, this is the importance of legal writing. That is why I am saying this. Now, in writing, we have to write as a block. Write as a block. Now, Madam said that he is done. Now, you are in the senior office. It is not a problem. Because you have guidance or format. But you practice independently. Or in a company, you work independently. In a company, you have guidance. Because if they are paid well, they will demand that you know drafting, you know legal writing very well. Because in legal writing, there is research. There are many issues. Otherwise, you cannot ask. How is it? This is a very basic thing. Now, how to write as a block? There are facts. How to start? Create a legal notice. A chat box legal notice. As soon as a chat box legal notice, you type in Google. And a sample comes. If you do that, you will not be effective. You have to do something. That is why experienced senior lawyers, because of drafting, 50,000 one lakh charge. They have their knowledge. Plus, how to start? First, what do we say? Second, what do we say? Third, what do we say? Because in one issue, we have 50% of facts. What fact is first, what fact is second? What priority do we have? All these are told by who? No one tells them. So, this is what we develop. Now, when we develop, we know what we are doing. We practice it. So, in the writer's block, how do you overcome? Sue Betty Flowers, I said. I have prepared a model. What is the model? M A C J. This is the model. In this model, any writing, storytelling is allowed. Poem is allowed. Short story is allowed. Or our own petition is allowed. Legal notice is allowed. What kind? Because in writing, there are many. Now, you are in a senior's business. Have to have confidence. You have to give him cross examination. You have to prepare for him. Understand a case. Tell him what is the issue. How to present facts? Only this is what you do. Okay, this person has the capability to understand. Can assist me. So, he will give you advice. That is all. He will argue. When you argue, prepare a document. Put points. Give an impressive. You will shine. You will go to the next level. Or you just go to the cinema. Because people see that. Do you learn or do something differently? Because everyone knows what to start. What to do is blank. Now, M A C J, what do they say? You have to prepare 4 kinds of mind setter. One, a legal notice. Or he said, a partition suit. You are going to do it now. You are going to do a partition suit. Because you are not starting. If you start, you will not know. Zero. First time, one person is going to do a partition suit. Or client is here. Your relatives are here. There is an issue. You have to do it. So, you have to do that. Senior teacher, teacher, help teacher. Or we do it ourselves. If there is an answer, you do not know. Try this concept. Try it. Maybe you share it with others. So, what is M A C J? M is madness. Now, what do they say? When you do something, you do what with a madman? How to do a madman? Anything. Now, I will tell you an example. An analogy. Now, you have to do a table. Is it okay? Do a table. You have to prepare. You do not know anything. Table, what do you want to do? You do not know anything. Now, you have to do a madman. First, you have to add a cap. M A C J is the same person. But four different caps. So, first cap, say, M. I am a madman. Now, I have to do a chair. Do a table. What is needed? All things are taken. Limitation is not allowed. Wood, forest, timber. All things are taken. Is this okay? Is this okay? Is this work out? Anything, I will filter. Without filtering, what is available? All taken. So, madman, what is partition suit? Now, I will type in Google. What is partition suit? Okay. What are the factors? You have to say. What are judgments? All things are taken. How much do you take? You have to automatically think. Why do we do this? Is there any benefit? Is this useful? This is very important. When you are old, there are many questions. Whatever you do, it will have use. So, when you think, you will not do it. So, we block a lot. So, that is why people take a step back. Now, madman, nothing is thought. Partition suit. What is partition suit? Definition of partition suit. What are sections? What act? What are judgments? And what are paragraphs? All these are taken. All of them are gathered. Gathered is not done. Now, if you go to a carton and take another, he will not think about it. What is used? So, thinking is not allowed. That is the madman. So, after understanding the madman concept, do not doubt. Doubt is not. So, this is very simple. Madman does not think. He will not filter. What do you think? So, you have taken a job. First, you need a lot of material. So, gather material. Then, you have to add the material. So, okay, madman. You have put doodle document or other. Drive or folder. Partition suit. Before that, award one. You know which side of partition suit. You know the petition side or response side. Tell him. Prepare it. Not prepare 2 minutes. Think. All of them are gathered. All taken. Judgments. Partition or suit? Definitions. International or local? Hindu succession? Other related? All gathered. Okay, madman, work is done. This is done by anyone. If you have a lot of knowledge, that is not allowed. Anyone who uses Google knows. Just type it. Download it. Use it. Indian.org. casemine.com. Many websites are there. You have to download judgments. Articles. So, keywords. Okay. Take all of them. Okay, next step. Architect. A house. I said, a table. An architect. He is ready to build a structure. Because I have a table. 4 legs. Or 6 legs. What size? What dimension? Only this is thought. Usually, we want the table shiny. Black or white. All of this is not allowed. Architect is only the structure thought. Structure is, I have put 4 legs. Or is it in a triangle shape? Square shape? Circle shape? Or is it in a rectangle shape? Only the structure is ready. This is a house. If it is an architect, that is all. So, a structure is ready. This is the architect. You have taken partition suit. Now, what do you do? You have updated. There are many Google mini databases. In your drive. Now, you are doing this structure. Now, what do we do? Okay, partition suit. Okay. What is the object? What law is it? What act is it? What is the object? This is an introduction. You have to store it. Second, what is the definition of this? A family? Relatives? Family structure? Family hills? Succession? This is a question. A family concept separated. Now, what are sections? The sections are written. Explain. Separate after. Now, you have facts. There are family size. Father, mother. That is the structure. This is separated. Facts are separated. Issues. Now, what issue? What do you file? Now, you are the受益er. You are not giving your name. Now, what do you want? Benefit? You have to store it. Now, judgments. Why do I say judgments? If you do it alone, some words are said. Some paragraphs. That is favorable. Now, you have a daughter. Women, why rights are required? That is a natural justice. Based on quotations. There are many judgments. Separate it. Now, outline it. That is a structure. This is the architect. This is clear. Madman, look. Now, it is a shape. You have a shape. Okay, start it. Second, do it. Now, you still start. Write is not start. Cannot do. Write is not allowed. 3rd stage. Do you doubt? Or 3rd stage? M A. Next one is C. C is carpenter. Carpenter. Now, we have taken the table example. What do we see? Madman. All materials were taken. Now, the architect designed it. Because it needs a simple dining table. A structure built. 4 legs. Above the top. Okay, next carpenter. Now, the carpenter cut it. Assembled it. It is shaped. It is functional. This is the example. We will take partition suit. In partition suit, now you are drafting. When drafting, you have to put a lot of material. All of them are not allowed. All of them are not allowed. So, this is what we have to do. Nothing is needed. Do a basic draft. You do not think. Is this good? You have not criticized. A draft is okay. It is very basic. You cannot filter it. Just a draft or a paragraph. A number to put paragraph. You have to take it. So, this is carpenter. This is where I actually draft. The drafting is here. Now, you have to do 3 parts. Drafting. What do you think? All of them are in a format. Okay. Now, M A C. What is J? What do you say? What do you say? Take an attempt. J is what? M is madman. A is architect.
Joining. Joining.
Joining. Other? Madam, I said. Judge. Now, we are talking about the writers block. Why we have to think about it? This is not written by writers. This is the number one author. Who are you saying? They will come. You have Sujata. They will come. This is common. Writing is the most difficult. Because if you put a paragraph, you will not think. How to start? What to start? So, that is the model. Now, M A C. Now, M A C. You have done it. You have got an idea. Easy. Because J is our biggest enemy. Whatever you do, who is the biggest critic? We are. We are the judge. Or not? Now, we have a session. I have a thoughts. Can we do it? How to overcome? First time, I have taken cross examination. Digital evidence. I did not take cross examination. I only observed. This is so hard. Because we have inner voice. Critical voice. That is why we are afraid. That is why we freeze. So, if there is a writer's block, it is very common. It is the method to overturn. So, J is in traditionally. At the beginning, we do not deserve it. So, the judge is what? Once, I have done the first draft. M A C. Now, the judge's mindset. You have to do the draft. You cannot do it immediately. 1/2 hour, 1 hour. Next day. When you do it, you have a lot of ideas. How to do it? This is very crucial fact. Let us go up. Because we are in our mind. So, you have to do it. You have ideas. Then you criticize. Then, criticize. This is convincing. Or words. We use words. This is a critical mindset. Because if it is easy to be a critic, or not, than to be a creator. So, critical mindset. I took it. I took your feet. And we draft. 3-4 times. When we re-draft, we have a finishing. A finalization. Now, what do you say? You have to involve another. How? You have done a draft. There are partition suits. Or a legal notice. You have given it to your colleagues. You have updated. You have told. You have a quality. A good way. Now, I will give you some advices. So, this is M A C J model. With this, we start the writer's block. How to start? What to do? Now, you have to research. Do a lot of photos. Madman. 90% of research. Whatever material is there. You find it. There are specific techniques. What is 10 facts? You have to, what is most winnable? Most important, crucial? Only the facts are highlighted. Or you have to compare your differences. So, we will go into the details. Now, in the M A C J model, do you have any thoughts? Then, we will go. Now, we will share your viewpoints. So, we have an idea. We know. Tell us.
Sir, until now, you have doubted. Hand raise.
Doubt is not. Okay. What is it?
Sir, hand raised.
Tell us.
Sir, tell us. Ready or not, come across.
10 months ago, I did not know.
Sir, ready or not, we have come across.
Come across. Did you ask?
Sir, how do you come across? Come across.
Type in chat. I do not know the word. Some.
Sir, come across.
Come across. Yes. Come across. I came across. Now, you have to, what is it? What context are you speaking? Just English definition. I have to put it in Google. Come across. Now, I have traveled. I am traveling to Chennai. I came across. What is it? I came across a big mountain. Now, I am at a place. Some things are, path passed. Come across. Or you will come across. In your future. That is the understanding. Okay? Okay. Now, we will go. This is English definition. What words are used? So, we will see it individually. Now, we have 3 ways. You have to understand. One, framing your thoughts. That is your thoughts. Even this is a writer's block. What is it? Let us say. Framing your thoughts. Because we cannot frame our thoughts. We have to sue. A case is, social media. A person has done a morphin. He has done a video. He has sent it to you. Or he uploaded an image. Or you have commented. Or he sued your client. Now, how to defend? What do we do? What is framing your thoughts? We have to decide what to do. So, framing your thoughts. That is all. How to structure? Outline? Research? Next, phrasing your sentences. Phrasing your sentences. How long is a sentence? How to use a sentence? Active voice? Passive voice? Now, do you know the active voice? If you do not know, we will ask. This is the main purpose. This is a fundamental class. You will sit. Now, I have asked. Do you know come across? That is why you are talking. Do we ask? Noun? Verb? Proposition? Conjunction? This is the building blocks. Only this is known. We can make a good attitude. That is phrasing your sentences. How to start? Now, I have a example. Now, we have taken this. In criminal practice, there is a paragraph. How do we make it? In all sessions calendars submitted to the high court, particulars of previous convictions and sentences should be given, except in cases of att作了. And a note should be made as to whether any or all of those previous convictions have been admitted by or proved against the accused. Now, I am going to chat box. Okay. Now, you see. Even if we have our statutes. Or our judgments. Because we have legal issues. Now, how do we make it simple? To make it clear? This is the transfer. Now, what do we say? The judge does not know. Like this, we have a legal notice. Opponent has a fear. You should be moved. That is why we have, what is it? A fictional story. We have clarity. Logic, clarity and reason. If it is clear, your communication is clear. Now, I am rewriting. How to rewrite? Now, sessions calendar. Now, particulars. Particles are actually details. Okay? How do we rewrite? When submitting a, this is what I have done. Now, you have to, this is like a whiteboard. We have to take a sentence. How do we rewrite? Now, when submitting a sessions calendar to the high court, you must include details. Now, we have to make it clear. That is the main concept of English legal writing. Who reads it? Many clients have, some lawyers have not read it. If not, we have to read it. In English, we have to read it. So, you must include the details of any previous conviction and sentences. Now, I will change it. Except in cases where the accused was accused. In cases of accused. Except in cases where the accused was accused. Like this, we have to break. Look. How many lines? 3, 4, 6 lines? All of them are the same sentence. There is a break. A long sentence. This is difficult. Our human brain has a driving power. So, we have to break. You must also note whether any or all those previous convictions are used. When we do it, it is clear. So, now, this is, phrasing your sentences is very important. So, framing your thoughts. First, what is the effect? We have to frame it. Then, what do we use? Phrasing your sentences. That is redundant. Now, there is a void. Now, there is a void. What does it mean? Nothing is said.
None exists.
Ah. What did I say? None exists.
None.
Correct. Now, the context is in English. Nothing exists. Basically, nothing, zero, or none exists. That is what I am saying.
It is not valuable.
Ah, zero. Not valuable. Okay. Now, I am saying. None exists. Void exists. Now, what is a void? It is the same word. It is finished. What is a void? Okay? In our legal writing, legalists, this is a lot of words. That is what I have said in subsequent classes. In accordance with our year in after. Many legalism is used. Year in after. Here is, here is. Now, a void is the same word. A good or a bad. As I said, it is zero. Now, what is a good? This is habitual. ना पोला इला वाइड ना पोला इन नालन वाइड इधर वंदे नमो वंदे आबिक्चुअल नमो वंदे नमो अदा इधर तिरुवा दे अदे दान पोस्ट नमो इधर मुनाड़ी नमक विडियो सीनियर्स नमो इधर मुनाड़ी नमो जजमेंट इला इधर मुनाड़ी तुड़ी अंदर प्रेसीडेंस इधर नमो पड़ी चुप पड़ी चुप पड़ी चुप पूर लीडर राइटिंग अभी एम अक्कारी ऑन पानी तेरा इधर तो दा वंदे अमेरिका ला दे मेड इट एस सीविल राइट अदा उन्होंने डिया न डी सिटुरिटीज प्रमिशन ना रुके एससीसी ना सोलिट अदा अदा मत इला मा अंदर तुड़ी पाला लिगिस्लेटर्स स्टैचूज यार ला मक्का वंदे इधर कंप्लेक्ट पन्ना ओर ट्रैफिक वायलेशन आयटन इन ओलो पोई पति ना रिराइट पानी पाना एप्पी ना प्लेन इंग्लिश लैंग्वेज प्लेन इंग्लिश लीडर राइटिंग प्लेन इंग्लिश लैंग्वेज इधर यूज पन्नी अदा यार पड़ी चाल ये लार कमी पुरीरा मार्ग इरू सो अदा दान वंदे डी प्लेन इंग्लिश ओर ट्रांसफर ए अपडेट एड़त आला नमो इप्पो नमक वेडिंग एस ओके ना फ्रेजिंग सेंटेंस पातो मून आदि वंदे चूजिंग योर वर्ड्स न चूजिंग योर वर्ड्स इन द दा कड़ेसी नमो वंदे एन मार्ग याना वर्ड्स वंदे चूज पंडरा अभी सोलिट इप्पो ओर एक्सांपल पाती ना सी ब्रिंग एन एक्शन अगेंस्ट नमो एन आई वांट तू ब्रिंग एन एक्शन अगेंस्ट यार सोला प्लेन टिफ़ सोला आई वांट तू ब्रिंग एन एक्शन अगेंस्ट अप्लेन टिफ़ और आई वांट तू ब्रिंग एन एक्शन अगेंस्ट डी कंपनी इप्पो ब्रिंग एन एक्शन एतना वर्ड्स यूट परम ब्रिंग एन एक्शन अगेंस्ट फोर वर्ड्स इधर अल्टरनेट वर्ड एन प्लेन इंग्लिश ला इधर लीडल इस ब्रिंग एन एक्शन अगेंस्ट इन द ओर लीडल इस इधर प्लेन वर्ड एन क्या राज ट्राई पन्ना इला प्लेन इंग्लिश ला नमो एन अन सोला वरा अच्छा नमो एन अन सोला वरो अदा टेक टच रजिलिश मारा सोलिट ना सू सू अच्छा बेसिकली आई वांट तू सू यू इला इला अब एन अदे आई वांट तू ब्रिंग एन एक्शन अगेंस्ट यू इन रदे एतना वर्ड्स अरुके आई वांट तू सू सू यू अभी इन द एप्पी सो इन द मार्ग याना नमक विडियो वर्ड्स वंदे टैरफला चूज पन्ना ना नमो अदा अदा पड़ी कमा द माइंड ला वंदे वरो ना आई वांट तू ब्रिंग एन एक्शन अगेंस्ट यू इन रदे आई वांट तू सू यू नमो सूना नमो तेरी आती मे अदा जज अंदर लीडर पार्लंस लो सून रदे गर्म तेरी आई वांट तू सू यू ना तेरी नमो वंदे ओर टू 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 अरे एट तू वर पोना अभी इन द राम सो अदा वंदे नमक विडियो इन पार्फला आरोप अदा मार वर्ड्स इधर नारी अरुके इन एस मच एस ना रुके इंस्टेंट केस नमो सोला नारी द नमो एड़त इंस्टेंट केस इधर एप्पी सोला क्या राज ट्राई पन्ना इला इंस्टेंट केस इधर एप्पी नमो इनो इजी आ इला नमो पुरीरा मार्ग एप्पी सोला इंस्टेंट केस केस इन आयंड मून वर्ड्स सोला इन इंस्टेंट केस ना रिंड वर्ड इला निगम मून वर्ड्स अजस्त पन्ना बेर इजी आप पुरी नो वन अदा बड़े ट्रम्यान वर्ड्स यूज पन्ना इला अदे वर्ड्स नंबर ऑफ वर्ड्स यूज पन्ना अना इजी आप पुरी नो दिस केस ना सोला दिस दिस इन बटन मुझे इतने इंस्टेंट केस ना इन द केस रेफर पन्ना निगम मून केस पैराग्राफ एड़त वंदे पिंजर इंस्टेंट केस इन मोदे इन द केस ना ओर 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 एन अन ओर 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 परी एन सोला द ओर ओर केस अरुके अदा एन ना प्रेसीडिंग पीरियड इन द ओर बेरी डाउट वंदे अदा लैंडलॉर्ड टेनेंट डिस्प्ले प्रेसीडिंग पीरियड ना एन ओरिजिनल रेंट ओरिजिनल रेंट अंदर टाइम ला एपोड पट्टा रेंट अदा पुरी की दा इला कड़ेसी आप ओड पट्टा रेंट अदा पुरी की दा इन दे ओर बेरी केस अदा द सो इधर मार चिन्ह चिन्ह वर्ड नमो वंदे रोमा इजी आ अदा वंदे बेरी लिटिगेशन आओ पुरी पन्ना कांट्रेक्ट्स ला वंदे ओर बेरी विषय आओ सो इधर मून विषय मार नमो वंदे मेन फोटोस पन्ना फ्रेमिंग योर थॉट्स चूजिंग योर सेंटेंसेस एंड चूजिंग योर वर्ड्स सर इला सर ओके इप्पो नमो टू जो उल्ला पोला सो इप्पो नमो मीनिंग एंड कांसेप्ट ऑफ इन डी प्लेन इंग्लिश और क्लियर राइटिंग एन अभी ना फर्स्ट कांसेप्ट वंदे यूज प्लेन लैंग्वेज याना जज वंदे नमक विडियो वंदे अंडरस्टैंड पन्ना नमक विडियो नॉलेज या परी इन द वंदे नारी वोटाबलरी तेरी हो अभी सोलिट नमो कॉम्प्लिकेटेड कॉम्प्लेक्स वोटाबलरी या यूज पन्ना ना अदा उन्होंने सारम सम वंदे निर्त्त पड़ो नमो एन अन सोला वरना उन्हें वोटने पुरी आदि इला ओर विषय वंदे सुति 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 सोलो सो अब इन द मार्ग याना प्लेन लैंग्वेज नमो यूज पन्ना पाया दिता ना अदा पड़ी कमा द वंदे इजी आप पुरी रिंडा द रोमा मुख्य मार द ना शॉर्ट सेंटेंसेस यूज पन्ना मुझे वारी तो वंदे ओर सेंटेंस ओर इधर वंदे ओर 20 वर्ड्स तर मार्ग री पात ना लद अदे मेल पोनिंग ना अदा पड़ी चाल पुरी तक डिफिकल्ट आरोप सो रोमा सिंपल अच्छे तो ओर 20 वर्ड्स ला वरकुड़ी शॉर्ट सेंटेंसेस निगम यूज पन्ना ओर पैराग्राफ ला ओर आइडिया मत दा ओर पैराग्राफ रिंड मून आइडिया सनी उल्ला कंडो वर कुड़ा द सो अदा ओर सो अदा ओर शॉर्ट सेंटेंसेस यूज पंडरा इंपॉर्टेंट मून आदि ना निगम वंदे नमो रीडर्स यार वंदे तेरे जी ना इप्पो नमो वंदे ओर बेल पेटिशन पोरना नमक रीडर यार जज अब जज वंदे एन मेन अप आप आर एन अन मार ना ऑफेंस नेचर ऑफ ऑफेंस सीवियरिटी ऑफ डी ऑफेंस अप्रो यार अदा पन्ना द और विडियो बैकग्राउंड अरु वंदे ओर कॉलेज प्रोफेसर आर अरे इला अरु वंदे एज सीनियर्स सीरियस ना अरे इला नेचर ऑफ डी ड्राइविटी ऑफ डी ऑफेंस वंदे रोमा मिनिमल दा इला अदा नोट सेंटेंस इन वंदे कम मी सी इधर रीडर के ताम अन्न मार इधर इधर वंदे निगम वंदे ओर ऑनलाइन ला ओर आर्टिकल एड़त ना अब वेर मार रहे तो अब वंदे निगम वंदे ओर बेल पेटिशन एप्पी पोर्डर द अभी तेरे जितने तो पड़ी पाना अब आउट के वंदे एट ना निगम वंदे लीडर लॉ ओ इला रूल्स निगम साइट पनिंग ना अवंदे यू विल बी लॉस्ट अब अदा पाद या कोई दो सो नमो यह रुद वंदे नमक विडियो रीडर्स यार तेरे जितने नमो पोनुन ना सरेक्ट आरोप इन दान वंदा डी फैक्स ऑफ डी केस वंदे रोमा रोमा इंपॉर्टेंट इप्पो नमो यूशली बेल पेटिशन पन्ना फर्स्ट वंदे डी फैक्स एन ना सोलिट नमो डिस्ट्रिक्ट पन्ना अदा वाला रोमा वाला रोमा नमो अच्छा ये ना क्रिस्पा एन ना नाम द अभी इन द पोट ना इजी आरोप नमो ऑर्किटेक्ट ना वंदे पातो ऑर्किटेक्ट ना ओर आउटलाइन पंडरा ओर ऑर्डिनेस ओर स्ट्रक्चर दरा सो नमक विडियो एड़त तोड़ पाती ना ओर ऑर्डिनेस दा अरु आउटलाइन पोट दा एप्पी में स्टार्ट पन्ना अदर प्रो ना निगम वंदे अंदर ओर पॉइंट वंदे निगम वंदे डेवलप पन्ना सो यूशली वंदे ओर पेटिशन पाती ना निगम वंदे फैक्स रुको अप्रो ड्राउंस रुको अप्रो अदा वंदे उन्हें यदि आधुनिक जजमेंट जदा साइट पन्ना इला अदा मार ना अदा मार ना विषय इनक्लूड पन्ना सो रो ऑर्डिनेस दा पड़ो मोदे नमक वंदे इजी वंदे रेफर पंडरा द इजी आरोप ओर इंडेक्स मार्ग पोना सिले इधर वंदे सिले द जज के पन्ना इधर समर वंदे प्रोवाइड पन्ना अदा मार अप्रो वंदे अक्यूरेट आरोप इधर रोमा रोमा इंपॉर्टेंट नमो वंदे सर ओके इधर नमो सोला मा विट्टे तम ना नमक वंदे बेनिफिट ओरे केस रिंड रोटला पोट रुका इला ओर विषय तो वंदे हाइट पन्ना इला सीवियरिटी करचित आता पर्सन वंदे अदा वंदे सोला मा विट्रा वंदे सो अदा मार याना विषय वंदे रोमा रोमा अक्यूरेट आरोप इधर वंदे ओर कोर्ट ओपन कोर्ट ले जज वंदे कंडो पुट्स था अदा बेल पेटिशन आर्डी पंडरा वंदे अबे पोर अप्पर ले अदा वंदे सोलिट था अरु वंदे जज वंदे इजी आया टाने द पोला अबे निर्त्त इला निगम एन सोनी निगम उन्होंने अंदर पेज नंबर कामिनो इट्स आप पेज कामिनो पेज नंबर अदा रेफर पन्ना अरु इला सर ना तेरा मा अभी सोलिट अभी सोला मोदे जज अंदर ओपन रोटले वंदे अरु वंदे सोल्ट था इन परमा केस वारू पो नी पार्ट फोर अप्पर ले बिसोला उन्हें रिपुटेशन ट्रेडिबिलिटी पड़े ना ओर द नमो नमो जज के मुनाड़ी ओर केटपेर वंदे चिना तिरुवा वंदे नमक वंदे अदा ओर एन सोला द ट्रेडिबिलिटी देना इधर ये लामे वंदे ट्रेडिबिलिटी देना सो अदा नमो पार्ट नमो अदा मार निगम वंदे फैक्स डिस्ट्रिक्ट पन्ना मोदे रिसेंटली लास्ट मंथ ओर पोर अप्पर ओर जेनरल आप डामना स्पेसिफिक अदा अन सो अन सो डेट टाइम अट अबाउट इन द मार ओर स्पेसिफिक आप ड़ू मोदे पड़ी कमा द ओके अदा पड़ी कमा द ओके सर निगम तप्पा सोलिट मा टिंग इन रो ओर ओर इधर वरो इला ना तिरुवा वंदे लास्ट मंथ सोनी नहीं लास्ट मंथ ना एन सर नारी द नमो कोर्ट वंदे पापो जज के पर निगम एन डेट अब वंदे नमो पर टिट्टे एन डी पेज तेरी आम अंदर टाइम ला वंदे अवॉइड पन्ना सो नमो राइटिंग ले नमो मुझे वारी तो हानस्ट आया ने फैक्स एन वो अदा वंदे नमो वंदे स्टेट पंडरा द रोमा रोमा इंपॉर्टेंट अप्रो कंसिस्टेंट आरोप द State pandadu rumma rumma important, apra, consistenta aruthadu vandhu, nalalalabetter, yeah, consistenta clarity varu. Ipo oradavandhu first name is pandinga, inor adhathal vandhu last name is pandinga, apra padikummodu enna? Adhu flow cutavu, ninga vandhu oru dissect pannanu, na, ivra daibda address pannapuravu. Illa, indha, indha party vandhu ibbedha topavu, othu plaintive solvinu, othu oru paira solvinu. Andhamadi illama, oru consistenta ninga vandhu oru maintain pannanu. Padikchitupodummodu, naladu page podummodu, thirupina first page la poittu, avr yaarsvannaru. Idhala namo vandhu, namateen nadandurukku, so, andhamadi, namo avoid pannummodu. Judge vandhu oru impression varu, yeah, judge, namo nareedavandhu nanakalavu. Adha, engeyar padikuparavu, ulo, kattunamottukku, apathu page, iruthu page, amuthu page. Avr, yapi time etthu padiparavu, illa, nareedavandhu, ninga high court judges, vandhu, nalapadichitavu. So, ninga evrodhavu, nalap, unudhu writings vandhu cleara, oru organizeda, consistenta pannummodu. Avr automatica vandhu oru, oru, enna soludhavu, satisfaction, uh, varu. Adhe mulu context pannu, ipa namo vandhu oru vishadu solutam, apina? Namu vandhu, namu readers vandhu, adhu terindurukku, apna namo adhu nanekadu podadu, yeah, na, adhu situation vandhu, adhu teriyama urukku. So, enna contextu, namu idhu solavaru, abbinthadu namo vandhu, uh, oru chinnadisruption muluma, namo adhu solamujipanu. Ipo partition suit, ipa edanala indha partition suitu ninga vandhu poitturinga. Uh, maybe vandhu, annan damidlu tatarara arutlaam, illa appa erandatlaam, illa edhavu oru crucial idhukku. Adha contextu koondu oru modu nalavu, illa oru false case vandhu file panindatlaam. Indhamadiyana vishinul vandhu, modu, oru empathy vandhu createavu, other readers, other judge, illa over is the readers. Adhe pola namo, yedhumodu, starting vandhu, conclusion vandhu first solinu. Conclusion na, idhu vandhu namo mystery novel edhala, namo tradacyla suspense saavichitlan, solittu. Namai enna solavaru, idhu vandhu, this is a, this, this petition is for a partition suit. Uh, andha, namai enna tradacyla solavu, porumavu, adha munaadi first parla solittu. Adha substantiate pandradu, namo vandhu, evidence, facts, adharavandhu addukittu, abde polavu. So, conclusion vandhu first solavu, mosthupanu, namateen vandhu oru clarity varu, namai enna solavaru, namai enna, namateen enna veenundradu vandhu. Namat vandhu, athendu vandhu, conclusion vandhu first, namu start pannitupanu. Apra always vandhu reader vandhu focus panniteyepu, nareedavandhu namo pesumodu, illa yedhumodu, namalay namalay vandhu focus pannu. Namateen enna solunnu, thonudhu solu. Adamadhu, judget idhu padichaa, idhu nalavu, idhu vandhu, idhu solama, illa idhu teevillama, idhu vandhu. Idhu vandhu teevillama, vandhu, avr vandhu, uh, bheradu paninduruparavu, ama idhu case radhu samanamillama urukku. Adhumadhu information vandhu avoid pandradu vandhu, uh, better, yeah, adhu, padichitavu, flow lapaidurummodu. Uh, idhu nee teevillama indha varuthu, ipa namo three golden rules of Indian evidence. Namu nareeyo sessions, nareedavandhu, adhu solirupanu, uh, yatra teriunna, three golden rules of Indian evidence. Okay, so, three golden rules, adha, enna, evidence must be confined to the matter issue, idhala may vandhu, draftin la varu. Unudhi petition la varu, ah, solunnu, analyze.
Sir, sir, solavanu, sir. The first point, you are telling, the second point.
Tandu, tolunnu, tolunnu.
He is a evidence not admissible. Uh, he is a evidence not admissible, show the best evidence.
Correct, kuripan, the best evidence must be given in all cases. Iplin, adha vandhu namo maina focus pannu, idhu, ummaliyadi teeviya, idhu namat vandhu, perfetta urukku. Adha namo, adha base pani, namuludhi, andha facts, namo solumodu, andha evidence highlight pannumodu. Nalaavu, adhu teevillama, oru, inu, naladu evidence idhukku, namakeetaa. But, adhalam vandhu namo, apotu pravapama, namuludhi best evidence, namo vandhu, namuludhi writing la vandhu, abde potittayepu. Adha, andha dates mention pandradu, time mention pandradu, oru name mention pandradu, idhala pandummodu, oru inu credibility vandhu, uh, idhukku. Apra vandhu namo, oru, sir, ninga yedithi, apina, thirumavandhu, 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 enna? Spelling grammar, idhendu check panniteyepu, see, English vandhu namuludhi, mother tongue kadaayadu. English vandhu namat, terindutnunavasiin kadaayadu, ana, terinditam, mojachipannu. So, adhanala, namo vandhu, vandhu yedithu, ipa namo Twitter la porunna, chat pandrunnu, modu namo misted pandradu, avoid pannalati. Namu vandhu poittu, so, edit option idhukkaadu, so, apra vandhu oru star, but, I intend to say. Idhala vandhu, namuludhi friendship li, oru, andha informer setting la, okay. Ana, oru document namu submit pandru, illa oru contract yazru, illa client, namu vandhu, oru letter anupurunna, illa. Uh, legal notice, anupurunna ochidinla, sir, legal notice vandhu, ninga, padinna, adhu padikummodu, namat vandhu, andha opponent. Adha advertitadla, organization, laavu, opina vandhu update haranjino. Na, you know, basic, idhuvee illa, enna, avr, namat vandhu, andha, byalapoyittu, idhu waste. Idhala nadandurukku, namu, now, andhamadhu, idhu, idhu vandhu, enna soludhavu? Mudichu varichu, namuludhi writing vandhu professional maintenance pannu. Uh, meere edhavu ochidu, okay, adhanala, rendu morudhavu, namo adhu vandhu edik pannummodu, correcta urukku. Yeah, mistake in a pannummodu, adhutthu person read pannummodu, namalay vandhu judge pannu. Nasunna, enna, namai, illarmay, iruthu, today, inborn, enna judging panniteyepu, adhutthu. Adhu vandhu, adhutthu, namalay pannuvaanu, enna, madshle vachit, mudichu varichu, oru rendu morudhavu. Namu vandhu draft, vandhu rewrite panniteyepu, idhu vandhu, uh, idhu vandhu important. So, ipo, okay. Eight thirty archi, but, uh. Polama, oru, you know, na, nareedavutu, but, at least, you know, twenty minutes, polama? Sade, okay, okay. Kanditipannu. Ipo, ipa namo vandhu phrasing your sentences, so, pathulinla, so, apna, adhu munaadi. So, uh, naan step process idhu solavu, adhumaade, structureda namo write, uh, panna, 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 enna? Na, namuludhi, thinking vandhu structureda vandhu develop aidu. Okay, namu edhu yedhunalamay, oru, chinnu, oru paragraph edhunatru, okay, idhu oru outline potu, ninga yedhunina? Uh, namuludhi thinking, uh, oru logical mind, namateen developavu, okay, edhu ninga yoschalamay, vandhu, oh, idhu, idhu step one, step two, step three, step four, abbin automatica varu. Adha solavu, structure writing is the best way to force structured thinking, abbin solavu. You have the four step process idhukke, yeah, na, first vandhu, namai enna solunnu, enna, madhul, namo vandhu, uh, yosittunnu. Namai yedhavatudhu, namai touchpannamay vandhu, just abde, poomodu, varumodu, any other, uh, uttarumodu, namai yosittunnu, namai enna yedhavu solavu? Adhu, adhu vandhu, yodo, easya, illa, yodo, uh, secretama solamudiyum, quitta, adhu vandhu, yapi solamudiyundradu, vandhu, namat vandhu yosittunnu, solavu. Adhutthapronu, na, indha sensible order, adhu vandhu, oru order apandu, once namu, enna so, sayinun, so, idea vanduchinu, adhutthapronu, order apanitupu. Idhada vandhu, andha M A C J, oru concept, andha order once readyaayachi, oru outline readyaayachi, na, adhu vandhu, ninga vandhu drafta, vandhu, koondu vandutla. Adhutthapronu, vandhu, ninga repetitiona, vandhu, uh, edit pannitla. Ipo vandhu, idhala vandhu, um, uh, enna soludhavu, phrasing your sentences la, vandhu pathinina? Oru example solubanu. Adha, omit, needless words, no, oru principle, omit needless words, abdinna enna? Omit needless words na enna? Solidinla, omit needless words, abdinna enna? Ipo writing la, nareed.
Nava, ilava, varthegal, neethu.
Ah, teevillada varthegal, neethu, uh, neethu, teevay yatra varthegal, neethu.
Teevay yatra varthegal.
Abdinna enna? Ipo namo oru sentence form pannummodu, rendu vidhamaa concept idhukke, one vandhu, working words, working words na, adhu daa meaning daru. Vandhu, namo, what if, well, English madhuryo, illa, uh, Rajni, I open the door, I close the, see, adhu daa working words, working words na enna? Adhutthavu, ninga vandhu, yedhstra addpannu, avasiin kadaayadu, ninga enna solavariunna, adha, andha, andha, important words matavu. Adhu vandhu, working words, adhu daa vandhu, actually carry the meaning, adhu, artham enno, andha working words daa, adhu vandhu taru, adhu rumma rumma important word. Abbinthummodu, indha words, vandhu, abdi pesamudiyadu, ninga abdi pesinina, oh, you, idhu vandhu, enna soludhavu, broken English soluvanu, illa, peteran soluvanu, illa. Teriyama, uh, teriyama taadittadu, illa, andhamadiya, adhu, artham avandru, apna idhutu vandhu, oru refinement daru. Idhu vandhu, oru professionala koonduvaru, idhu enna, apina, adhu daa vandhu, glue words, so, glue. Namai yapi glue vandhu stick pandru, inla, andhamadi, oru sentence la, vandhu, rendha ninga perichitna, one vandhu, working words. Working words matteme, unudhu, artham kodukku, ana, adhu matteme, unudhu, vandhu, uh, oru refinement professionala urkada. Apo, adhutu vandhu, glue words idhukke, adhu daa vandhu, andha words, vandhu, glue pannu, adha, conjunction, conjunction na enna? Solamudinla. Conjunction.
Connection. The connection words.
Ana, connect, enna, example, illamay words, connectanapadu, ipa glue words indhadu, illamay connectionna, keep the words together, adha glue words. Apna, eladu glue pandradu, eladu connect pandradu, glue words, alu, conjunction one idhukke, prepositions idhukke, andhamadi, um, uh, punctuation idhukke. Oru, oru sentence, inoru sentence, vandhu, uh, joint pandradu, andhamadhu, nareed vishinulidhukkunla, drama la, nareed idhukke, adhu oru vast topic. Adhu, na, substitute class polavu, but, oru, ipa, quitta soludhavu, conjunction na enna?
And.
And, ah, yara solinga, and, illa, adhu write pannu. Solunnu?
And, but.
Am, if, but, and, for, allam vandhu, conjunction, enna polavu, uh, enna soludhavu, example, na, I like red and blue, red, and, potunna, I, red and blue vandhu. So, conjunction, ipa, idhala vandhu, adhu daa vandhu, glue words, so, andhamadhu, nareed words idhukke. Ipo namuludhi, omit needless words, inmodu, enna, concept na, namo mudichu varichu, vandhu, uh. Mudichu varichu, namu, idhu vandhu, reduce pannu, evrodhavu, namu vandhu, andha glue words, reduce pannidinla. Avlo, travelu, unudhi, andha sentence vandhu, uh, nalalable arukku, uh, professional arukku, uh, nalapuriyum sayum, adhu correcta urukku. Ipo, oru example solutam, baru, la, an application under section four eighty-two of CRPC was filed by the petitioner for quash in the FIR. Idhala vandhu, edhavu, tapu, edhavu kadaayadu, idhala vandhu, sixteen words idhukku, motto, enna solavu? An application under section four eighty-two of CRPC, inor vishinu, ninga note panninka, namuludhi, mukkalas, ellajudgments almost vandhu, passive voice la daa urukku. Passive voice, inmodu, namu, moonadavu padichaa, na, enna solavaru, enna, madhul, puriyavaru. Adhu vandhu, rumma, ru, ru, sir, adhathal, passive voice, in a concept, ninga use pannu, sade, vade, idhu varu, vana. An application under section four eighty-two of CRPC was filed by the petitioner for quash in the FIR. Idhu vandhu, pathinga, na, yodo words idhukke, sixteen words idhukke, idhu, abdi, namo, short, uh, okay, idhu vandhu, abdi, na, idhu, enna, working words, pathinga, na? Application indhadu, working words, section four eighty-two, indhadu, working words, CRPC, petitioner, quash in FIR, idhala, badina, working words daa. Uh, glue words, pathinga, na, and, for, idhala vandhu, glue, glue words, so, laval. Ipo vandhu, idhu vandhu, namo reduce pannu, abdi, petition, idhu vandhu, active voice, convert, convert pannu, adhu, omit needless words, vandhu, rendu me pannu. One, periyas sentence, vandhu, shorta, chinnada sentence matru, inon vandhu, active, passive voice, vandhu, active voice, matru. Idhu, rendu me important, so, petitioner filed an application, and then, an application was filed by the petitioner, India, a petitioner filed an application. So, an application, uh, was filed by the, andha, by, the, lam, remove padtaale, enna, chit, glue words, remove pannauta, ne, cleanayachi, petitioner filed an application. Under section, under section, you as in, potinna, chinnada aidu, you slash yes, potinna, under section, four eighty-two, CRPC, for quash in the FIR. So, padi narav words, indhadu, panandu words, maruchu, idhu namo, idhumaadi, habitu, habitual, namo panniteyepu, na? Uh, namu, ino, andha, andha skill, vandhu, developaidu, urukku, namat. Idhu, enna, na, ipo, the clusters, word clusters, so, laval, adhu vandhu, namo, vandhu, mudichu varichu, remove pannu. Uh, legal phrase, vandhu, redundant daa urukku, sir, allam, thirupi, thirupi, oray vishadu, thirupi, thirupi, solavu, madhurukku. Adha vandhu, cutout pannu, idhala, overdutkime, vandhu, ipa, namate, examples idhukke, adhuttha, oru, namo, vandhu, adhu vandhu, detail daa, over. Actually, namu, vandhu, andha, whiteboard induchinu, namu, vandhu, actual sentence, portu, andha sentence, vandhu, yapi, vandhu, namo, uh, transform pandradu, enna, madhul, type pani, unudhu, kattumodu. Othu vandhu, inu idea, vandhu, clearavu, oru, normal sentence, abdi, namo, vandhu, convert pannu, enna? Maybe substitute, na, namo, adhu, plan pannu, yapi, vandhu, video pannitey, andha whiteboard madhavachi, uh, pandradu, adhu, jam board nu, nu, idhukke, adhu vachi, adha, portuttanu. Na, try pannadu, munaadi, but, adhu, laptop la, oru, adhu, mobile phone la, varla, so, adhu, pannu, namo, substitute, na, inor, pannikla. Idhu, na, idhu, oru big, oru, oru, oru lesson, oru module madhurya idhukke, so, adhu, monavu, na, polavu. Uh, compound prepositions idhukke, adhu vandhu, simpler pandoavu, apna, compound prepositions na enna? Compound sentences na enna? Simple sentence na enna? Oru, idhu, solamana, consideration of sentence, the ruling by the trial judge, idhu, ningalay solunnu, pannu, the ruling by the trial judge. Idhu, abdi, ninga vandhu, ipo, uh, simple, omit needless words, in the concept, use pani, abdi, ninga vandhu, re, uh, rephrase panninga, the ruling by the trial judge. Yara, oru attempt pannu?
Held by the judge.
Huh?
Held by the judge.
Vera yara, the, the ruling by the trial judge, sade, inla, namo, remove pannapudadu, apna, idhu, trial judge, illa, appellate judge, illa, I two judge, namu, teriyam poidu. Adha, namo, enna sentence idhukku, adhu, cutpannithu, meaning poidadu, adhu, working words, vandhu, ninga disturb pannapudadu. That is very important, yeah, working words disturb panninga, na, sentence oru, meaning maridu, uh, trial judge ruling, very good attempt, uh. Adhu, oray, oru chinnu, oru, idhu, idhu, adhu daa vandhu, grammar la varu, unudhu, ipo, possessive noun, possessive, enna, tereyunna, inla? Huh?
Trial judge makes ruling.
Illa, adhala makes, idhala vandhu, the glue words, vandhu, namo, adhijamat koonduvaru, adha, omit needless words, indhadu, vandhu, namo, opposite, violate pannu. Makes, uh, inhamadiyana, words, vandhu, add panniteyepu, illa, possessive, na, tereyunla, possessiveness, possessive noun, possessive, enna soludhavu, form. Uh, abdi soludhavu, na, uh, idhu, avanudhi, weedu, adhu, abdi soludhavu? Possessiveness, sir, namai, abdi, adhu, kurikadu? Yara, oru attempt pannunla, almost, adhu, correct da, ipa, yar, uh, adhu, sonala, pushpan, madam, sonala, adhu. Adhu, perfect, adhu, ana, adhu, oray, oru, idhu, vandhu, missingu, so, adhu, adhu daa, adhu daa, vandhu, yara, solamudinla? Possessive noun, uh, that is house important, inla, abdinna enna? Okay, actually, that is his house, actually, adhu, vandhu, possessive noun kadaayadu, adhu, vandhu, contraction, so, laval. That is, that is, is, his house, indhadu, andha, that is, indhadu, vandhu, ninga, that's important. Adhu vandhu, unudhu, vandhu, contraction, risa, podama, cannot, vandhu, content, poranu, illa, andhamadi, urukku, do not, vandhu, don't, porinla, adhu, vandhu, contraction. Possessive noun, indhadu, abdi, na? Illa, illa, adhu, madam, sonada, correct, the judge apostrophe, right, single quote, inla, single quote, yes. The judge's ruling, thathala, trial judge's ruling, not that or, trial judge's ruling. The ruling by the trial judge, vandhu, trial judge, colon, okay, na, type pannitupanu. For the ruling by the trial judge.
Apostrophe.
Ah, apostrophe, adha, apostrophe, the, the, single quote, so, ah, adhu, daa, correct, trial, the, teevillada, trial judge's ruling. Ipo, parunga, ethanav words, ethanav word, kamyaayat, parunga, idhu, rendu same meaning daa, unudhu, meaning, edhavu, change avala. Trial judge's ruling, ibbidi, namo, uh, possessive, singular noun, inhamadi, namu, use pannaramecham, na, nareed, unnecessary word, letter, vandhu, namu, vandhu, remove pannila. Apo, sentence vandhu, automatically, shortavu. Adhe, adhe pola, sir, compound prepositions idhukke, ipa, namo, prepositions, na, namo, prepositions, na, enna, solunnu, parla, injunctions, solinga, and, for, but, if, adhala, conjunction. Aman, nareed, injunctions idhukke, preposition na enna? Preposition na enna? After, above, from, huh, solunnu?
Possession, kurikiru, in, on.
Adha, in, on, on, the, above, under, apra, enna soludhavu, across, adhala, varthilinla? Ipo, compound prepositions, abdinna, uh, mere, adhu, onutu, merepatta, adhu, simple proposition, adhu, rendu, moonu, vishadu, urukku, the year in, after. After, year in, adhu, rendu, tamam, year in, after, adhu, vandhu, compound proposition, so, laval, at that point in time, uh, as to, inhamadiyana, na, munaadi, sonala, inla, sir, uh, not, less than. Uh, substituent to, inhamadiyana, adhu, urukku, compound proposition, varu, nevertheless, adhu, simple proposition, nanekadu, sade, vade, at that point in time. At that point in time, idhudu, oru compound proposition, idhu, unudhi, simple alternative, enna, solunnu, parla? At that point in time, idhu, every simple alternative, la, namo, solamudiyam. Simple, oru word la, namo, mutchala, at that point in time, vandhu, oru word la, namo, mutchala, namu, nareedavandhu, inhamadiyana, at that point in time, adhala, soluvanu, apna? But, naland void pathulinla, nalane, podu, illa, voidane, podu, adhutdu, vandhu, oru compound proposition, na, adhu, vandhu, adhu, vandhu, redundant legal phrases. Adha, naland void, ipo, at that point in time, na, namai, abdi, vandhu, simplea, modipu, solunnu, parla?
On that time.
Uh, illa, adhu, vandhu, then, at that point in time, idhude, enna, solavaru, na, at that point in that time, that time, so, laval, then, adhu, unudhi, English, simple alternative, vandhu, then. Then, abbin, potale, ninga vandhu, at that point in time, mudichu, adhu, ninga, at that point in time, podave, vandha, adhutdu, badila, then, polavu. Idhu, yankita, oru PDF, fruit, na, adhu, prepare pannu, na, na, adhu, groupla, poittu, illa, namo, vinod, sir, anupuranu, na, na, avr, vandhu, kuduparavu. Chuma, oru tweet type, solidu, na, na, apra, namo, merkundu, polavu, uh, ino, classla, ipa, for the reason that, adhutdu, badila, ninga, because, use pannaramechala, podu, for the reason that. Idhala namu, yedhavu, from the point of view, having said that, from the point of view, by reasons, or, by virtue of, by means of. Idhu, vandhu, because, pota, podu, by virtue of, na, by, podu, by virtue of, podu, na, avasiin kadaayadu, in favor of, na, for, podu. The check was drawn in favor of so and so, in favor of, the check was drawn for so and so, is, adhu, podu, adhu, ana, namu, enna, oru habit, shola, namu. Yo, idhu, abdi, namo, rumma, simplea, plaina, andha, ellartame, easya, purujidu, na, apra, abdi, namo, uh, lawyer, andh, death, andhamadi, kadaayadu, idhu, yodo, simplea, cleara, plaina, urukku, avdhal, naladu da. Ana, idhu, habitu, la, namu, vandhuddu, in order to, not, inla, actually, two is enough, namu, nareedavandhu, use pannu, ipa, naanidu, use pannitda, in order to. Actually, two is enough, so, mudichu, vandhu, conscious, na, namo, idhu, idhu, pancha, effort, potu, edhutu, vandhu, na, oru, two, na, oru word la, mudichu, adhu, in order to, podu, apna? In relation to, namu, podu, nareedavandhu, about is enough, about, daa, namu, solavu, in relation to, adhe, pola, with respect to, so, laval, adhu, vandhu, on, andh, oru word la, poidu. In terms of, nu, podu, adhu, vandhu, in, andh, adhu, poidu, andhamadhu, nareed, oru, oru, periyal list, idhukke, adhu, namu, kada, prayer to, na, before, substitute, namu, use pannu. Argument pannumodu, substitute, oru, illa, prayer, actually, before, after, da, adhu, prayer to. Okay, la, so, in pola, vandhu, mat, idhuma, nareed, principle, city, adha, the hidden verbs, idhukke, avoiding hidden verbs. Adhe, madhul, yapi, vandhu, oru, longer sentence, yapi, vandhu, shorter sentence, maatrudu, apra, oru, oru, sentence, yedithu, ipa, andha words, vandhu, correcta arrange pannu. Munaadi, first, etha, polavu, pinadu, etha, polavu, correcta, meaning, varuda, adhamadi, porudhu, apra, concrete words, use pannu, adha, familiar and concrete words, use pannu. Na, vandhu, rumma, English la, vandhu, na, vandhu, super, abbinthadu, talan, namai, sir, per, enna, polavu, na, rumma, puriyada, for example, verbosity, in, oru word, idhukke. Verbosity na enna? Verbosity now, uh, ipo, enna soludhavu, uh, complex word, okay, na, complex word, anode, verbosity, verbosity, nareed, abde, uh, koota, urkadu, uh, simplea, oru line la, soludhavu, vandhu. Abde, uh, sutti, 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 vandhu, soluvanu, adhu, verbosity, inhamadi, sir, words, urukku, table, idhukku, adhu, teevillama, vandhu, insert pannu, adhamadi, pannudhu. Namu, soludhu, language, vandhu, concrete and familiar, avu, andha word, uh, su, trae, vandhu, na, inor, define, define, potana, nareed, word, urukku, adhu, vandhu, yarbit, ete, yarbit, terindutadu, andhamadi, word, la, avu. Suit opposite, alternate words, adhu, namu, use pannu, na, adhu, vandhu, meanated, yarbit, puriyala, abbin, madhul, ipa, namu, namu, yara, vandhu, uh, persuade, panni, namutu, etha, madhul, koonduvaru, abbinthadu. Idhu, tavidu, active voice, passive voice, idhala, vandhu, base verbs, idhukke, base verbs and noun verbs, ipa, consider, ipa, application, idhulinla, application, to, vandhu, base verb, enna? Yara, tereyavu, solavu, parla, application, idhukke, I, I, T I O N, I O N, idhukke, application, T I O N. Idhu, vandhu, idhu, vandhu, normalization, so, laval, adhu, oru noun, or, verb, vandhu, noun, or, convert, pandradu. Idhutu, vandhu, uh, base verb, real verb, na, enna, namai, abdi, verb, da, adhijama, use pannu, correct, nitil, korva, correcta, solittu, avsara, madam, solidinna, apply. Idhu, vandhu, nareed, vandhu, use pannu, namu, nareed, namuludhi, documents, ipaniga, ipaniga, vandhu, andha, judgment, la, la, padika, armichinu, na, ninga, na, soludhavu, la, unudhu, par, note, pannipanu. Nareed, I O N, words, ninga, papi, consideration, application, nareed, madhurukku, adhala, vandhu, consider, nu, podummodu, easya, vandhu, puriyum. An application, apply, abbin, ninga, start panninu, abdi, unudhu, sentence, vandhu, oru verb, vichu, start panninu, na, easya, resume li, idhu, da, soluvanu, resume li, so, na, past tense, vichu, verb. Adha, resume, ninga, prepare pannummodu, resume, writing, oru concept, adhal, vandhu, ninga, potummodu, achieved, nu, podu. Adha, achieved, indhadu, vandhu, verb, achieved, nu, ninga, vandhu, past tense, la, podu, ana, verbal, vichu, da, ninga, start pannu, ina, adhu, illama, sir, per, vandhu, abde, valla, 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 nu, podu, adhu, vandhu, puriyadu. Achieved hundred percentage, or achieved two hundred percentage profit in the first year, inhamadhu, podummodu, padikumodu, vandhu, immediate, vandhu, oru, oru, ummaliyadi, pannidutar, pola, abbinthadu, oru impressionavu. Namu, writing la, vandhu, idhu, vandhu, ellartame, idhu, vandhu, oru common, da, ninga, vandhu, judge, kudhu, ninga, vandhu, madhurukku, active voice, la, mudichu, varichu, verbs, use pannipannu, modu. Avlavu, ninga, persuade, panninga, idhu, namu, advertisement, vandhu, copywriting, idhukke, advertisement, la, ellathalime, paru, harin, podu, H U R R, yahari. Uh, trial starts now, uh, before closes, ellamay, vandhu, verb, base pani, amuchupanu, adhu, vandhu, call to action, so, laval, C T A, adha, na, vandhu, munaadi, marketing la, urukku, modu. Uh, hurry up, idhala, vandhu, pathinina, uh, uh, action words, verbs, adhu, base pannitda, avr, inari, sunadu, na, na, haripannidu, ipo, fast. So, inhamadi, nareed, vishadu, andhamadi, subject, vandhu, verb, to, close, avitupu, illa, na, meaning, maridu, inla, apra, grammar, usage, no, concept, adhu, vandhu, commona, namai, enna, dramatic, mistakes, pannu, enna, spelling, mistakes, pannu. Ipo, namo, padham, contractions, idhukke, run on sentences, idhukke, namu, nareedavandhu, vandhu, na, nareed, sentence, namudhi, trauma, potu, add pannidu, arthame, puriyadu, adhu, vandhu, oru, idhu, effective, avukkada. Idhu, tavidu, uh, presentation, idhukke, oru, oru, long, lengthy paragraph, vandhu, yapi, vandhu, bullet point, vichu, adhu, break, panni, andhamadi, adhu, that is also very, very important, yeah, ninga, lengthy, paragraph, podummodu. Number inla, pota, podu, oru, patthu line, podu, na, adhu, padikatadu, interest, idhukkaadu, adhu, vandhu, abde, skim, pannit, poidu, so, andhamadiyana, vishinulidhukku, andhamadi, adverbs, adjetives, vandhu, adhidu, use pannapudadu. Adverbs na enna? Uh, unudhi, terindutu, still fully, uh, verb, vandhu, qualification, daru, okay, la, uh, so, andhamadiyana, vishinu, vandhu, avoid pannu. So, idhala, vandhu, abde, namo, varla, idhala, vandhu, jardins, vandhu, avoid pandradu, cliches, avoid pandradu, apra, tradacyla, vandhu, model six, vandhu. Persuasive legal writing, na, enna, idhala, vandhu, uh, yara, keda, oru petition, abdi, urukku, adha, the Aristotle rules for argumentation, idhukke, oru, oru, six rules, puttutara, Aristotle, adhu, namo, follow pannu. Caesar, unla, vandhu, Roman, uh, enna, soludhavu, andha, andha, time la, unna, unna, they are known for a speed, speaking, and argumentation, k. Avr, vandhu, five step formula, puttutara, Caesar, own, solittu, so, andhamadiyana, vishinulidhukku, yapi, vandhu, logic, vandhu, abdi, learn, pani, yapi, apply, pandradu. Logic, vandhu, indicative, uh, reasoning, idhukke, deductive reasoning, idhukke, so, idhala, combine, pannida, oru, writing, vandhu, koonduvaru, modu. Adhu, vandhu, oru, enna, soludhavu, oru intended, object, vandhu, attainavu, uh, oru, model, vichu, oru, boilerplate, vichu, oru, template, vichu, namu, pannu, modu, matteme, namu, vandhu. Namu, vandhu, andha, idhutu, pannu, so, idhu, vandhu, oru, trial and error, oru, practice, uh, so, idhu, daa, vandhu, overalla. Namu, substitute, idhala, vandhu, namu, vandhu, oru, oru, model, edhutu, illa, oru, principle, oru, principle, uh, one week, abbinthadu, vandhu, edhutu, te. Unudhu, vandhu, adhu, vandhu, neetavu, oru, document, idhukke, adhu, vandhu, review, pannu, illa, oru, paragraph, idhu, yapi, vandhu, inu, better, communicate, pannu, abbin, ninga, unudhu, oru, doubt, urukku, na. Ninga, vandhu, vinod, sir, approach, pannu, apudunu, namu, vandhu, adhu, discussion, vichu, namu, pannu, yeah, na, namu, training, abdi, na, namu, usually, pannu. Uh, ninga, vandhu, legal notice, yedhunu, ninga, vandhu, oru, draft, yedithi, ipa, andha, draft, vandhu, inu, yapi, better, pannu, improve, pannu, abbinthadu, namu, live, pannu, modu, unudhu, oru, idea, varu. Oh, na, idhu, panna, ipa, ibbidi, inha, stage, idhu, vandhurukke, apna, what is the learning in between, abbinthadu, oru, concept, urukku, so, adhu, solittu, idhutu, vandhu, control, pannitla.